This is the continuation of the hearing by Brick Investment Corp. Seeking a variance and/or special exception for 1800 North Washington Avenue, the site of the former Scranton State School for the Deaf. Applicants seek zoning board approval for a mixed-use restaurant, office space, event space, dormitories, and recreation campus. Institutional light zone.
Thank you. Dan, I know we heard a lot of testimony on this already, so where exactly are we going to pick up?
Okay. I believe the applicant presented their case, and I believe we heard from the neighbors, but I don't believe we've heard from the objectors. So I think we'll start with the objectors. I do want to put on the record, and you guys could object if you want, we received a couple of letters since the last meeting. The first one is from Elizabeth McLean. It's a two-page letter expressing support for the project. There's another one from Patricia and Lawrence Rosetti, one-page letter, also in support of the project. And then we have the city planning commission's meeting, which the commission passed a motion by a three-to-one vote to recommend to us that the special exception request be approved. Those are three letters that I got in the interim. If you want to object to...
To be continued. I don't want to interrupt you already, but...
We're going to be sticklers about the microphone. Is that what you were going to say? I can't even hear her from here.
Okay. Is Ms. McLean here by any chance? Mrs. Rosetti here? Okay. You want to step up?
Mr. Dan, while she's doing that, I'm just preserving the objection to Ms. McLean. And then with regard to the city planning commission, I'm also going to put a letter into the record that we planned surrendering to city council, basically saying that since we were denied the right to create a appellate record, and we were not allowed to have a subpoena that night, that we're asking city council not to adopt the recommendation of the city planning commission. But that would just be an objection that I want to add, and I want to send that letter into the record when we do our housekeeping.
Do you want to see Mrs. Rosetti's letter? That's the only copy I have, so if I get it back later.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Patricia Rosetti, 812 Sunset Streets, Scranton.
Thank you.
Your letter was in favor of the project, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to ask her anything?
No. Just to clarify...
Can we see that letter? We've never seen it.
And also, where is Sunset?
That's the only copy I have, but I'll make copies for everybody.
Where is Sunset Street? Mrs. Rosetti?
Right down the street from Electric.
Sunset Street? We're parallel to Delaware and Electric, several blocks from the Scranton State School for the Deaf.
Are we sticking with their... I was going to say, aren't we sticking with their 200 feet?
Well, we haven't been. We haven't been sticking, I think.
Well, that's the problem. We needed to be sticking.
We allowed Mr. Young...
...that were a mile away.
Yeah, we allowed Mr. Young, who was more than 200 feet away, so... You know, if you want to give the copy of the letter up to these guys, and...
Why don't you just read your letter?
There you go.
Dear zoning board members, I have worked at Marywood University for three and a half years. That said, my husband and I are currently tax-paying residents of Greenridge and have been for the last 38 years. We are writing to you in favor of Brick Investment's request for a zoning variance. There were several of us in support of this exception at the meeting on Wednesday night, but after four and a half hours, when the meeting devolved into the character bashing of Marywood and then a discussion of Meadowbrook Creek and Wyoming Avenue, we left. We feel the proposed project for the former Scranton State School of the Deaf is progressive and exciting. We think it will be a great addition to Scranton and a sign that we are actually moving forward as a city. Greenridge has been quietly eroding for years. Our property values have declined and continue to do so. The home next to ours has been vacant and for sale for 18 months with no buyer in sight. There has been so much successful revitalization of the downtown area, why can't we have that in other parts of the city? The misinformation that is being perpetuated is ridiculous and nothing short of scare tactics. We do not feel that a six-seat bar within a small neighborhood restaurant poses a threat to the neighborhood. As stated at the Greenridge Neighborhood Association meeting this week, the statement that it will be a hangout for Marywood students or become a nuisance bar is just ridiculous. As to traffic, any use of the property will bring additional traffic. As to parking on North Washington Avenue, my sister worked at the Scranton State School for the Deaf for 25 years. She and her coworkers parked their cars there every single school day. That precedent has been set. It's our understanding that no member of Greenridge Neighborhood Association or the opposing neighbors have ever actually been to one of Brick Investment's properties. We find it difficult to understand how they can be so vehemently opposed to something that they have never actually seen. Marywood University is currently in financial distress. They do not have the staff or the means to properly maintain that property. As Mr. Shepstone stated, it is on the precipice of becoming blight. The property is already an embarrassing gateway to this section of the city of Scranton. We are willing to take a chance on Brick Investment's vision and promise. We urge you to do so too. My husband and I both signed the letter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
Mrs. Rosetti, you had said that there's going to be a six-seat bar. Were you in the room the night I cross-examined someone from Brick Investment who also acknowledged that the patrons in the restaurant will be drinking as well?
Yes.
And were you also in the room that night when I cross-examined the individuals from Brick Investment who acknowledged that the weddings that will hold up to 400 people will also be able to drink as well?
Aren't they on Dunmore's property?
That wasn't the question, just whether you were in the room when I said...
Yes, I was in the room.
Thank you. And how long have you been at Marywood?
Three and a half years.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll need that letter back.
I don't know if you heard me, Dan. I'd ask that the record be made part of the record.
She read it into the record, anyway. Okay. You guys have any witnesses?
Yes. Mr. McGowan?
If I can, just for the purposes of the record, and it goes to standing. With regard to the objectors, I just need an identification of the properties that are involved. If it's Attorney Dempsey's property across the street, I understand that she is within that catchment area. If we're talking about other properties that are in an ad hoc group, I would like an identification of that. It goes to the standing argument, how far they are, who they are. But if your questions are just for your own affected property...
Well, I think for now we'll say they're for my own affected property, but Mr. McGowan is also going to speak as the former facility supervisor for the Scranton State School for the Deaf, where I believe he worked in excess of 33 years. And he's going to also testify as to whether that building was in fact used as dorms in the past, because on your application for special exception and/or variance, it said that they were.
My question is, it goes to standing. You have to identify, if you're here for a group, who's in your group. I know Mr. Seisinger here is in a recognized neighborhood group. I was here for other ones with Southside. I just came for a group. You can ask your solicitor for it if it is unincorporated, which I understand this is an unincorporated association. I ask again, what are those properties? If it's Attorney Dempsey, and she's asking for herself, I understand she is within that catchment area. She's actually across the street, so she's made this objection for herself. Fine, I understand the standing is there. If it's for other persons, I might have to inquire as to who those persons are.
If you're testifying, you should take the mic.
I think Attorney Dempsey told you who this person is. It's me speaking.
You just have to... He asked that you... Don't pull the microphone away from someone who's testifying. So if she's testifying, she gets it. If you are, you get it.
Well, let's make life easy for purposes of right now. It's going to be based on my home, which is well within the 200 feet radius of the school. However...
We're going to allow Mr. McGowan to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Penatar.
Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
My name is Tom McGowan. I live at 1212 Woodlawn Street, Scranton. I was facility manager at the Scranton State School for the Deaf. I started my career there as a teacher in 1976 and retired in 2007. From 1986 to 2007, I was a facility manager. I was asked to come tonight to give a history of the building. I'm hoping that all parties can come to a conclusion here, because I don't like to see what's going on at those buildings. Those are beautiful buildings, and they really need to be taken care of. There was a question whether the building down front was a dormitory or not. The building was specifically built to be a self-contained, lower-school dormitory, cafeteria, and classrooms for the younger kids, to keep them away from the older kids. It was never used for that. The top floor, which was supposed to be a dormitory, was turned into classroom use. Second floor was always classroom use, and first floor is cafeteria and multipurpose room. If you have any questions, I can answer them as far as the usage of the building and...
I'd like to ask one follow-up question that came up at the city planning commission. Mr. Scott, who's also a local neighbor within 200 feet of the property, had mentioned about the sound of the air conditioning, and I believe you commented on that as well at the time. Could you just go over that for us, please?
The air con...
This is an existing building. I'm not asking for a special exception or variance for an air conditioning unit that may or may not make noise. I just don't think it's relevant at all to the proceeding.
We'll allow it.
It's already there.
We'll allow it.
What would you like to...
We had started to talk about the sound that the air conditioning makes, and you were referring to Mr. Scott.
Excuse me. There was a new air conditioning unit put on that building, 2003, 2004, 2000, somewhere after 2000, in a general renovation contract. The unit that was there hadn't worked for probably 20 years, and when we put the new unit in, the sound, we had neighbors complaining about the sound. They put some baffles on it. I don't think that unit's even running anymore, to tell you the truth, so I really don't know what the situation is right now, because I haven't been involved since 2007. But at the time the unit was put in, it was very loud.
That's all I have, Mr. McGowan. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Hang on, Tom.
Part two?
Yes, I could ask you to take a look at something. I'm going to call your attention to this in a moment.
Mm-hmm.
Sir, you were here when I asked questions of my experts at the prior meeting. Were you here?
I was at a planning commission meeting.
Oh, okay. One of the exhibits I had placed into the record was a report that Marywood had done. I've given you a copy of it. I'd ask you to take a look at the top of... It says 2.3, and it talks about Building 1.
Yes.
Does it identify the former use for that particular building?
It says former name and use, elementary school and dormitory.
Okay. Does it tell you what year it was built?
It was built between '73 and '74. This is '74, somewhere in that area.
Now, you testified that you were there for a number of years. What year did you retire, Mr. McGowan?
I retired in 2007. I started in 1976.
All right. Did the facility operate after 2007?
Did the... Yes, yes.
And were you in the facility after 2007? And if so, what dates? Up on the third floor?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay. So you wouldn't know what uses they had after you retired? Would that be correct?
In that building? No.
Thanks. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan.
If I could just follow up, let's beat the dead horse. It was actually designed as a dormitory. Is that correct?
Yes, I said that in my opening statement. It was designed that way.
So it has the dormitory rooms already in there? Is that correct?
It was open dorm... They were open. There was no dormitory rooms. There's two big open spaces on the third floor with bathrooms and offices off of them.
So you haven't seen the existing conditions report after 2007? Is that correct?
No.
Oh, all right. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan.
The only other thing I'd like you to do is...
Ms. Maloney would like to speak, and then I will like to close up as the attorney. However, someone said there may be other people here that want to speak. I don't know if there are. If you wanted to allow that or not allow that, I don't know.
Let's hear from you guys first.
Okay. So Sam is going to go next.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Samantha Maloney, 1009 Sunset Street. And I'd like to provide you with a copy of our brief that we...
So I'd like to provide you a copy with our brief that we've worked really hard on. Again, I am so sorry for the red lines in the column. Again, as I think I've mentioned before, I'm a mom of four kids. I work part-time, and I am doing this all like I'm not being paid as an attorney. Mary Dempsey's not being paid as an attorney. We're volunteers for our community. I also like to kindly request that tonight, rather than take a vote, that, again, this is 12 pages, single space, that you take the time to digest all of the testimony, the, you know, five hours of testimony. Take the time to digest everything that the witnesses have said, our brief, and really contemplate the issues that both parties have. And begin with, I'm sure we've heard this before, but since in October, that was not admitted, I have to go through a little bit to explain, again, what our group is. The Greenridge Revitalization Committee resulted from a presentation by Lance Robbins regarding nine properties located at the former Scranton School for the Deaf in Harte hearing, which was purchased by Marywood University. The GRC's mission was adopted in July 2018, and the GRC's mission is to assist stakeholders in assuring a safe and useful and sustainable transformation of the Greenridge community while maintaining its historical integrity. And we are hopeful that the development of the nine properties will become beautiful and a historical addition to our neighborhood. Our brief is divided into four portions. First is an update. The second is our continued request for an evaluation by the city engineer. The third is our continued request for conditions to the variance and/or special exception if granted. And our fourth is that if the conditions are not granted, then we request for denial. I'm going to cover briefly 1 through 3, and Attorney Dempsey's going to cover number 4. So as an update, many of you know, at the hearing in October 2018, we're allowed to voice our concerns and cross-examine witnesses, and Urban Smart Growth was unable to answer some of the board's questions, and we requested a cent of conditions in result. And these conditions were considered reasonable by the board, and some of the conditions on the variance included to receive approval from the city's engineers regarding stormwater runoff. Too fast? Okay. Sorry. Thank you, Laura. All right, talk. I'm a little nervous. I apologize. And I'm also just getting my voice back. At the planning commission, I had literally no voice. It was very painful, I think, for everybody. Anyway, so our conditions, yes, and to receive approval from the planning commission from both Dunmore and Scranton, and to complete with operational use all nine buildings, thereby assuring that none of the buildings are left abandoned. And the board kindly gave the parties time to negotiate. Since that time, Attorney Mary Dempsey met personally with Attorney Pat Lavelle. They had a very positive meeting, and Attorney Dempsey, myself, Laura Augustini, attended a two-hour meeting at City Hall with Jack Sweeney, the zoning officer, Lance Robbins from Urban Smart Growth, and his associates, as well as...
I'm going to object. Obviously, this is closing argument. If they're done with their case, I understand that. This is not testimony. It doesn't go to any of the elements. In fact, it's going far afield of that to extraneous matters that don't go to the elements whatsoever. Yeah, were there discussions?
Well, I would just like to respond that it is testimony, because I was part of these negotiations, and I would just like to inform the board on what is relevant, because we have had discussions. And I think they're important to know, that these discussions are in a positive. We want to see this developed.
With regard to any particular settlement, that is not proper for the board.
Absolutely. I will not go into that.
Right.
In that instance, said...
I think Attorney Maloney said she will not go into settlement.
Yeah, I'm going to ask that, obviously, be stricken if the... This has already been disseminated, which obviously I think is inaccurate, and I know it's not relevant and incorrect.
This seems to be a recap of what's gone on.
Yes, and like I said, I knew October 2018 was denied, and so that's why I put it in.
Okay. We're going to allow... I'll watch your continuing objection, but we'll allow Attorney Maloney to go forward.
Thank you.
And if we could skip over any settlements apart?
Yep, I will skip over all of that, just because of time as well. Negotiations seemed positive. We said at the roundtable, that was very positive. We walked out with a very positive meeting, that we were headed in the right direction to enter into agreement. For example, compromise was considered. For the third condition mentioned above, specifically that the bar and restaurant would be contingent on four of the buildings being under construction, as opposed to all nine being operational. We repeat that Greenridge Revitalization Committee is not opposed to the development of the site. Our mission is to assist stakeholders in assuring the safe and useful and sustainable transformation of the Greenridge community. Part two, our continued request for the review by the city engineer. The section of the code is within the brief. The developers already discussed how they're going to be paving both the soccer field and the basketball area, which will eliminate an extraordinary amount of green space. They also discussed that they would use permeable pavements, and I just want to highlight that permeable pavements are great when replacing pavements that are not permeable, but in this case, you're replacing trees that soak up water. So there is going to be a possibility of a significant amount of stormwater. And you have the authority to make this happen pursuant to the code. You can request that a city engineer take a look at this before your vote. And then our third, this is, to me personally, this is the most important part of why I am here tonight. Should the zoning board decline our request of the previous, we would like to include the previous arguments... Again, we can skip all the code. Laura's told me to talk, so that's all in there, that both on the variance and the special exception, both the city code and the zoning ordinance allow the opportunity for conditions. And tonight, I heard, you know, a number of different applicants come up, and they received conditions, and it was, it looks like it's going to all work out, you know, knock on wood. So first, I want to highlight that the GRC agrees with the applicant's expert witness, Mr. Shepstone. And again, I apologize if I spelled his name wrong in the brief, because, you know, at this point in time, I was just reading, listening to the YouTube videos, and I cited the minute markers where these quotes were made, so you can go back and see if it was... If I took anything out of context, please correct me. I have a reputation for transparency and honesty, so please, if, look this up yourself, read it yourself, listen to it yourself. So Mr. Shepstone, in response to whether a restaurant that would sort of alcohol and an event space would be loud and detrimental to the neighborhood, states, and I quote, "The only way this project makes any sense is a unified whole." And this was at 50 minutes and 30 seconds. That's what those quotations are. He continues by stating that it must operate as a high-quality activity to turn into a jewel. Otherwise, it's just running a restaurant or tavern and would have some impacts, some detrimental impacts. This is of grave concern to the GRC. Granting the variance and/or special exception use without conditions does not require the full completion of the nine buildings. It doesn't become the jewel. It is possible that if the zoning variance or special exception use is granted, the Scranton property alone could increase in value, and the developer could build a wall simply closing the pathway and bifurcate the two and sell the Scranton property separately. The Dunmore properties could possibly continue to remain empty or be developed, but they would be separated. And then exactly as the applicant describes, or I'm sorry, as the applicant's expert witness, Mr. Shepstone describes, it could become the lone restaurant or tavern that would have a detrimental impact to our neighborhood. Furthermore, the developer's recent record and the concerns exasperated by the lack of planning, which Mary will talk about, these two issues combined with the development at a success, at significant risk of failure. In fact, USG employee Hillary Levitt stated that it is possible that Building 1 could be finished before the other buildings are finished. And again, give the timestamp of the YouTube video. In fact, in response to city Don King's question, if it would be finished on a month or a day or year, Hillary describes a number of unplanned variables such as approvals, contact, contract availability, and trades, and, quote, "The list goes on." That makes the timing unknown. Clearly, there is a lack of planning in regards to the completion of all the buildings, and Building 1 could be that lone restaurant that would have the detrimental effects on our neighborhood, as Mr. Shepstone, their expert, stated. We would like to reaffirm that similar to the state of Rhode Island, which in December 2017 placed an oversight structure to monitor USG, the zoning board has an obligation to the citizens... Sorry. The zoning board has an obligation to the citizens to ensure that the development is done right, to ensure the health and safety and general welfare of the Greenridge neighbors. In fact, the applicant's expert, Mr. Shepstone, agreed. In response to the questions about noise, he states that, quote, "Obviously, the board can discuss that, and it's your job to figure out the conditions that will work and see if the applicant will accept them." To see if the applicant will accept them. Furthermore, the zoning board in 2018 mentioned these conditions proposed by the Greenridge Revitalization Committee, especially in light of the lack of planning, were not unreasonable. Although discussions between the GRC and the USG failed at no fault of GRC, our need to maintain our public health and safety has not changed, nor has our desire to retain the character of our neighborhood. And again, we are providing the sample conditions to the variance, the ones that we prepared, that we were prepared to send in response to Attorney Lavelle's original draft. I'm not going to read all these conditions. They're included in the brief. Number one is, you know, what we felt, or I felt, that we walked around the round, left the roundtable with, is that we would, GRC would agree, to not object to the variance. It'd be done. It'd be over. Number two, that at least four of the other nine buildings would be partially, four of the other nine, and the ones in Dunmore, would be under construction before business one would even open. Three, that they would receive approval from the, of the site plans from the planning commissions of both Scranton and Dunmore. And I learned something new at the planning commission, that would also go to a regional planning commission, which would be, you know, great. Another set of eyes to help us make sure that this becomes the perfect centerpiece for our neighborhood. Number four, that USG would not object to no porking on North Washington, and I'd like to include that also loading and no garbage pickup on North Washington. That's a main street that, you know, as you enter into our neighborhood, it's the beauty of the street. USG would agree that for events, the traffic will ingress through North Washington and egress through Jefferson, and that way you have a circular effect instead of cars, you know, jamming up there. And six, that the restaurant events would include, restaurant event hours would include Sunday through Thursday, turn off the music at 10, close the restaurant at 10:30, and Friday, Saturday, turn off the music at 11:30 and close the restaurant by midnight. And after hearing what the previous case, I think we should probably request 9 o'clock instead of 10. These above conditions are merely to ensure the development of all nine buildings are considered as a whole, thereby ensuring that none of the buildings are abandoned, and also for the protection of our public health, safety, and welfare, and also to maintain our neighborhood's character. GRC agrees with the statements by the board members of Walsh and Gatton, as supported by Solicitor Dan Penatar at the October 2018 hearing, specifically that the board's job is to protect the neighborhood but not to squash the projects. There must be a middle-of-the-road way to achieve this. Board, we are asking you that if you're going to grant the variance or a special exception, do what we weren't able. Place conditions to protect the public health and safety as well of our neighborhood's character. Thank you. Since it was testimony, do you have any questions, Mr. Attorney Jones?
No, I'm treating it as argument and objection to...
I mean, as far as the conditions that they're asking for, were you guys willing to...
I, whatever...
I was going to wait till Attorney Dempsey gets done, and then we'll talk about the conditions.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, again, and thank you for your time and your patience throughout this. I know this may have been one of the longer and more extended drawn-out hearings that I know this may have been one of the longer and more extended run-out hearings that you've dealt with, but as you can see, I think both sides are quite passionate about their beliefs and believe in what they're fighting for here. A couple of things, I'm just going to close up, and we call this my closing argument. We're also trying to create an appellate record here, so that in the event an appeal is taken to court, everything is protected. I apologize if some of these things you may have heard once before, but again, I need to say them so that they can be part of our appellate record. First thing, which I think is super important, and Sam just went over, it's interesting, everybody talks about resolution, 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 and I'm not going to get into the specifics of it, but Attorney Pat Lavelle and Bill and I have gone back and forth on this a few times. And really, the people who stand in the best stead or stead to do that are you guys. You, if you're going to find that you're going to issue a variance and/or a special exception, you have every right in the world to put conditions on it, and I'm going to go over that. It's specifically listed in the zoning code, and Dan said you want to talk about that a little bit afterwards. And really, I think 60% of it, we do agree on.